Uh, Joanne uh Bunic, but she's on vacation with her family. She will be coming on board as uh with Wagner, first grade teacher as well.
Peggy Sharkey.
Can you get my contact?
Oh, absolutely. So I see that I'm here.
Yeah, we are here.
Um, but before you guys start, is there anyone else in the audience that has something that they would like to share? If you don't mind, if I could start with any visitors that we have. Once, twice, three times. Okay.
All right, okay. Peggy Sharkey, SVEA president, and I'm so happy to see these new hires coming in. But I also want to make sure that the board is aware. I used to be a board member back many years ago in Stager. And I know how overwhelming it is for board members to get all this stuff to them. There's a lot of documents that you're given, and it can be very overwhelming. And I just want to make sure that the board understands that since our last contract, there has been over a hundred certified teachers, certified educators in District 168 that have left. A hundred people have left. We've not hired. We've not replaced those people. The bleeding needs to stop. And that power is in your hands. So just think, you've had over a hundred people that have left this district. Some have moved away. Some have retired, but there's been way too many that have gone down the street. And I just want you to be aware that on those reports that you get, it has added up to over a hundred people that have left since the last contract.
Can I say something?
Yep. If you stand and station next to the record.
Hi, my name is Kim McClaney, and I have had the honor of teaching kindergarten for eighteen years in our district. It is my joy and passion to educate students and fill my classroom with love, structure, learning, and support. I build trusting relationships with parents to make their learning experience whole and include them in their child's learning and developmental journey. We are better together. I am also part of a unique group of nine retirees with two hundred-plus combined years of service. We were frozen on the step scale for seven years and unfortunately did not get step corrected when the colleagues who qualified were afforded this correction. We were informed it was because we were in the retirement cycle. Last year, we met with Dr. Lee about the situation. She told us that there was much discussion about this and that they were trying to work on something, anything, to compensate our group of nine in some way. That some way is today. I am before you today to ask Dr. Lee, the board, and our community to find a way, a way to please not take us off the table when trying to come up with a solution, a way that will compensate us, our group of nine, who've devoted our pretty much entire careers to this school district, to compensate us in a fair manner, and a way that will honor our legacy and lifelong contributions to the education and development of the children in our district every month. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Barkley, and I will be starting my twenty-fourth year in this district. Last time I spoke, I wanted everyone to hear what I was saying. Tonight, I speak to you, my board members. At the beginning of every school year, President Jones calls his families. I'm assuming that she means that, and it goes for the rest of you as well. So I'm going to ask you all, what would you tell your family to do about a job that wants to pay you less now than they did last year? Would you tell them to accept that contract? Or would you advise them to go somewhere else? Somewhere where they would be valued for their education, expertise, and years of experience in the form of a raise? Last contract, I received an increase of three point five eight percent per year, which included a step increase for staying here each year. This contract, it looks like the district wants to offer a three point four five percent increase, which still includes my steps. That's a decrease in pay by point thirteen percent. That doesn't make sense. Then you add in the increase of insurance. I dropped from PPL's HMO because I couldn't afford the three hundred dollars per paycheck for the PPL, which incidentally is now going up to three hundred seventy-five dollars to pay. Now my HMO is also increased by thirty-three dollars and eleven cents to pay, to say nothing of the exorbitant cost for family insurance. Would you advise your family to stay or start looking for another job? The thing is, we don't want to leave. We love our students and their families, each other, and this community. But we can't keep working for less than we deserve, especially in this academy. Please look at how the district spends its money and decide if you can keep affording to put teachers last, because you cannot put students first when you put their teachers last. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Johnson, and I've been here with my South Village family teaching in second grade for twenty-three years. However, I'm only being compensated for seventeen years. Why? I know. I'm confused. For the last four years, I've sat back and I've said that, oh, it's fine. I love my South Village family, and I'm, I've never really went into teaching for the money anyways. I kept telling myself that it will all work out, and soon the school board will realize our great work and then compensate us for all the dedication that we do for them and to the families that we serve. This was during our first contract. Now, here we are yet again, second time around, and I'm still waiting for the board to see and honor us with fair pay and a fair contract. What hurts so much is that for the last twenty-three years, I have put my South Village families first over my very own. Why? Well, because I love my students. I love my families. I love my babies. That's how much I want to give to them, everything that I have and even done some. I have left my own biological kids at home to thunder themselves since second grade. They walked home. They waited on the porch. They were latchkey children till I got home, usually not until four or five o'clock because I was working at Shoa's after school, also before tutoring children free of cost. Yet, I have a master's degree, and most people that have a master's degree charge thirty to fifty hour, fifty dollars an hour to tutor. But I love my kids, and so I think that they deserve to have every opportunity. I think that they should be helped to reach their highest potential. And again, I don't want money or recognition for it. I believe it is truly my job and love to provide each child that walks into my classroom, school in fact, with a positive, loving, enriching education that will later help them to become something amazing in the future, where they too will have an opportunity to provide for their family, just as I am currently trying to provide for mine. I wouldn't honestly change anything that I've done over the last twenty-three years for my South Village families. However, it is now 2025, and I am unable to provide the bare minimum for my own babies at home. I am now struggling to pay my mortgage, my NIPs go, my water. It's quite embarrassing, obviously, because the cost of living has skyrocketed since COVID. And let's not forget COVID, okay? Because during COVID, COVID, all the teachers were shoved onto the computers without any training and told to just do it, to teach our children, communicate with our parents, and make sure that you contact the parents in your class daily and have a daily log and turn it in at the end of the day. Not sure if you're aware of this, friends, but this contacting and teaching included many grueling hours on a computer and then additional grueling hours late into the evening, checking in with parents during my dinnertime, my children's time, my time to decompress. It was exhausting and physically painful. I myself was in a back brace for two best, excuse me, back brace for two years after that, trying to correct my forward neck posture, just so that I could lift my arm over my uh, or over my head and do my teaching. Insurance paid nothing for the brace or for my two years of physical therapy. I split the bill myself, all five thousand plus two thousand for X-rays, et cetera. What I'm trying to say is, without us, the teachers, District 168, school board, you guys, District 168 would have never made it. I have a second job now. I go home and during the summers and during the school year for the last two years, I have taught, teaching kids in the car, I'm a driving instructor. So when summer comes, I get up at six fifteen and I go to my job. So I'm there at seven thirty to pick up my children at eight o'clock. I risk my life for twenty dollars an hour to teach these children to be safe on the road so that I can pay my bills. I don't get my hair done. I don't do my fingernails. I don't do anything fancy. I'm very simply, but I can't afford even the simplest things. Second time.
Um, so we are absolutely a family, and we have somebody on the dais that's leaving our family. And we don't usually get comments from up here, but my repents, and if there's anything you would like to say, I'm extending the opportunity to you now.
Well, I'd like to say, thank you. Thank you to the Board of Education. Thank you, Dr. Lee. And thank you all, because many of you all I have worked with. District Curriculum Committee for hours on end, virtual and face-to-face. I've also worked with some of our new staff here, Dr. Stephanie Jones and Mr. Moody. It's been a pleasure. I've known Dr. C for a while. This is my family. And people say, aren't you happy? It's never sweet, because this is my career. I taught school. Many people don't know that I taught. I taught for fifteen years. I've been on the other side of the fence. I was a social worker with the Department of Children and Family Services, so I saw the other side that many of us don't see. So I've had an expansive career, but overall, I've enjoyed my thirty-five years of service. And I want to say thank you to all of you all. And thank you for those that are watching virtually. Thank the parents and anyone else watching virtually. Thank you.
We move on to consent agenda items. Are there any that need to be reviewed and voted on separately? All right, Karen, and I make a motion to approve consent agenda items two zero two to two zero nine as presented. Motion, Ms. Stephanie, question. Well, how we? No, no. Fisher.
Yes.
You're a yes. Justin Williams?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Presentations, annual financial.
Good evening, uh, Board President. I'm Leonard Moody. I'm the District CSBO, and I am here to introduce, um, Ms. Lindsay Fish. She's a principal with our, uh, account, accounting firm, Sickich, and she is here to share the results of our 2024 annual audit. Ms. Fish.
Thank you. Let me stand over the side over here. Um, so as Mr. Moody says, my name is Lindsay. I am a partner at Sickich, and I was in charge of overseeing the audit this year for the year ended June thirtieth, 2024. Um, this is the second year that we've been working with the district. As a result of the audit, we've issued several different reports. I see most of you have a stack in front of you. Um, so I won't go over these in too much detail. I'll give you about a five to ten-minute overview of the results of the audit. Um, so the first report I'll cover is the annual financial report. This is the largest of the reports that you have in front of you. I'll try to give you some page numbers as I go along as well. And if you have any questions, you know, feel free to ask throughout. Um, so as you flip into the report, about four pages in is page number, I'm DNA number one. It says, we have discussion analysis on the top header. Um, so as this is titled, this is prepared by management. So if there's one part of this very thick audit report that you're going to read, I would say start with the management's discussion and analysis. Um, it's just a good, high-level overview of the district's financial position, um, kind of spells things out in layman's terms. It gives you some comparative information that you wouldn't find elsewhere within the audit report. Um, so I won't go over that in detail, but again, if there's one part of the audit report you're going to read, start there with the management's discussion and analysis. After management's discussion analysis, about six pages past that is independent auditor's report. This is on Sickich Letterhead. It's page number one. Um, so the second paragraph down there gives the opinion that we issued on the financial statements. We issued a unmodified opinion, uh, which is the type of opinion that you want to receive. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. So congratulations to the district on the receipt of that unmodified opinion. And then we've issued a second opinion, and that starts on page four, also on Sickich Letterhead. This second opinion is required due to the amount of state and federal funding that the district spends on an annual basis. This just means that we're required to do some additional compliance-type testing um, within our audit procedures. At the bottom of page four, we just note that we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses, which is a good thing. And then on page five, we also disclose that, um, the results of our tests disclose no instances of noncompliance that are required to be reported. So another clean opinion issued there. As you turn to the financial statements, those start on page number six. Um, this is the statement of net position. Um, this is what I kind of call your ten-thousand-foot view of the district's financials. Um, this statement isn't really used in day-to-day operations because it pulls in long-term liabilities as well as capital assets. Um, but the reason it's presented is it's required to be presented to receive that unmodified opinion. Um, so overall, bottom of the page there shows your total net position is twenty-nine point nine million. So of that, fifteen point six million is your investment in capital assets. And then you have net position that's restricted for various purposes. You generally do the tax levy restrictions there. And then you have an unrestricted net position of seven point six million. Uh, page seven is, uh, kind of the same high-level, uh, view of the district's financials. The third line up from the bottom shows your change in net position. Um, so your net position did increase three point five million from twenty-six point five million to twenty-nine point nine million. Um, that three point four million increase is going to be different than what you see in the funds themselves. The reason being is, in the funds, when you purchase capital assets, that's a reduction of your fund balance, whereas in this statement of activities, um, that's an increase of your assets. So that's why you're going to see that discrepancy between not as much of a large increase within your funds as you're seeing on that statement of activities. Pages eight and nine, uh, so these are more kind of in the format that you're probably used to seeing. There's a column there for each fund. This, you know, does not take into consideration any long-term assets or any long-term debts. General Fund, first column there on page eight. This is your education and working cash fund. And then you have, um, column headings for each individual fund that's listed there. Um, focused generally on the general fund. Total fund balance in the general fund was nine point six million. Of that, six point eight million was unassigned. The remainder was either restricted for, uh, assigned for working cash or student activity funds. Um, so one metric I like to look at is comparing your unassigned fund balance to your annual operating expenses, which can be found on page eleven and twelve. So six point eight million is about three months' worth of reserves, twenty-five percent of your annual operating, um, expenses. So right in the range of where you want to be as far as reserves in that fund. Um, pages eleven and twelve just shows your changes for each fund. Is the third lineup from the bottom shows your net change in fund balance. Overall, for all your funds combined, you did have a slight increase of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in fund balance. So, um, left from fourteen point one million to fourteen point three seven five million. Uh, just note the transportation fund and capital projects fund did have a drawdown in fund balance, um, to put those in a deficit position as of June thirtieth, 2024. So just something to, to keep an eye on in future years, see if maybe a transfer over would be something that you'd be looking at to get rid of those deficit balances, but just something to keep an eye on, um, nothing overly concerning there.
Where if we do.
Okay. So those are my comments on the annual financial statements. Uh, the next report I'll cover is your single audit report. And the page I will cover is page number eleven. So the single audit is required when you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding. So we're, again, required to do some additional compliance testing. Um, so this is kind of, I don't know, the summary of auditors' results. I'll call it your report card for your single audit. Um, and you have a nice clean report card. So we've issued an unmodified opinion, and we did not note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. We did not note any noncompliance. Our major program was the Esser funding, so that was, uh, six point eight million of federal expenditures of your ten point two million. So we tested about sixty-seven percent of your federal awards. I'm going to clean, uh, report cards there. The next report is the one that is not found. This is your ISBAFR. Um, so one thing I always like to highlight on the ISBAFR, what the ISBAFR, it's, uh, like a uniform form that every school district is required to fill out that includes the audit results. So it's really just all the numbers that's in your audit report. We plug into this ISBAFR form that ISB provides. Um, and one tool that they include in that ISBAFR is your financial profile summary, which is on page four, if you're looking at the top-left corner, it's page four. Um, so it, what it looks at is five different categories, and it gives you a score between one and four, um, basically a gauge of your financial health, if you will. So I just wanted to note that the financial profile designation for the district was recognition as of June thirtieth, 2024. This actually stepped up from your score last year. Um, last year, you were review, and now you bumped up to recognition. And, um, it was really just due to number two there, your expenditures to revenue ratio. That was a three last year. It was bumped up to a four this year. All the other scoring categories stayed the same. So what that means, that recognition just means that you're in good, you know, financial health according to ISB's formula, and that no intervention is needed from ISB at this time. All right, one last report, uh, is the auditors' communication to the Board of Education. So this is just required communication that we have to have with the board. So if we had any, you know, difficulties with management or anything of that nature, it would be disclosed there. Happy report, we had no difficulties performing our audit. The audit went very smooth. Um, the one item that I always like to cover here is on page number nine. And what this is, is we take a look at the district's internal controls, um, the policies and procedures in place, and just see if there's any areas for improvement. So as I noted previously, there's no items that we consider to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We did have a couple of items that we considered to be deficiencies, which, um, you can think of that as areas for improvement or ways you could strengthen your internal controls. So there's just three items that we noted this year related to grant reporting, um, journal entry processes, and then tracking equipment purchased with federal funding. So just some recommendations, um, for improvement that can be put into place for next year. Uh, that concludes my presentation. Just wanted to say thank you to Leonard for all of your help during the audit process. You know, it's hard for him because he didn't audit for him. He wasn't really, you know, in charge of the books that year. So, um, appreciate you and your team and your help during the audit.
Any questions on the board? Ms. Fish.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I like your name. Have a good night. Well, thank you, Dr. Lee, Mr. Moody, and for you all's diligence for this.
Welcome.
Correspondents, members of team.
Okay, we have one card. Just thank you, so dear CCSD 168, Board of Education. Thank you so much for the thoughtful birthday presents and flowers. Y'all are all the best.
Y'all. I was going to say, that looks like a really nice card. I just want to touch the letter. This is Dr. Lee. I like your card. So that takes us to our birthday acknowledgement. Board member Burns, who was not here. Dr. Lee, who we celebrated during our IASB government board meeting. Uh, Ms. Portia has a birthday coming on Thursday. And if there is anyone, my, okay. I was scared. Right. And if there's anybody in the audience that has celebrating a birthday for the month of June, we say happy birthday to you guys as well.
Cancer room. I have a cancer room, so happy birthday, cancers.
We move on to committee.
No, it's over.
Yeah, it's cancer now. It's cancer. Yeah, it is.
Committee, members of the committee, finance.
Okay, finance, I mean, back to me. Uh, we have fund management of eleven million, five hundred three thousand, three hundred fourteen thousand in extension. We have a waiting payment in the capital of one million.
That eleven, that eleven million always, like that block.
One million eight hun, oh no, one million eighty-six thousand, one hundred seventy dollars and twenty-three cents. That's the waiting payment. Okay, recommendations, um, if, uh, for joining our conference, if you want to do any pre-comferences, please let the board know as soon as possible because I should receive their, uh, registration already. So let them know if you want to do any pre-comferences for Friday.
Your conference is just the stuff.
That's the stuff I'm writing.
In, in the A's? There's an additional fee, that's why we have to get probably their chance.
Where do I?
I'll send you a link on the IASB. Uh, I'll send you those.
I usually go Friday night.
Like, and so I'm going to say, for new board members who have been here for less than. Less than six years. There's some classes out there that would be beneficial to you. For board members who have been here more than six years, those classes aren't so beneficial unless you want to move into the presidency to do the class to that. They don't do the school tours anymore. They used to take us on school tours and you could go see, like, the monastery and all those. They don't do them anymore. So there are some classes out there that's on Friday morning that are beneficial. I was looking in the conversation and I'll send you a link. Thank you. Oh, okay.
That, that is hard work, so thank you.
South Village Community Partnership, Del Jones?
We got, um, the South Village Fire Station is having an ice cream social sponsor. I, uh, very, um, but China, um, ice cream parlor. I've been going to have, um, you could come and enjoy one scoop of ice cream with your local firefighter. That will be on, uh, June twenty-sixth from four to six P M. Free entry, raffle games, prizes, and more. And the library is asking for donations for back-to-school. They're looking for sponsors, crayons, markers, uh, erasers, glues, scissors, ball play cans, all this is on their website, uh, rulers, highlighters. That has my report on community partnerships.
Thank you. Uh, so we are short some committees on here. And so I do have a report from IASB. I wanted to first acknowledge Senegyere. Yay. For being, um, elected to the director-at-large position for our State Board of Education. So congratulations. And then to the board, we've lost our field service director, Natalie. She is no longer with IASB. But we do not know who our replacement is as of yet. So if you got questions or concerns, I'm not sure who to pick. Just let you know. Um, is there anything from scope? Nothing from scope? Okay.
Matter of question, just because you all are, um, we recorded.
So between Garrett is the Director-at-Large for the Illinois Association of School Boards. So I just want to make sure that we.
Our state school association?
Yeah, the State Board Association, yes. I don't want people to think I'll do it on the Illinois State Board of Education.
No, 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 the Illinois Association, yes. Um, so you said nothing for scope, are there any other reports that's not listed that would like to share out?
I have a question. So we're going to have to have a meeting for press calls, because I know Congress is busy, Jeff's not here, so I'm going to do it. But we're going to, are we going to do it beginning of August, or I know we don't need it July, so have a.
Well, that's a committee, we need until I.
I would, okay, okay, so we only need to make a meeting.
Yeah, so we can, we can anything, but it's a day that works. We're, yeah, we're here.
I'll call him and find out.
Okay, yeah, see what you can do, and then we'll set a policy.
And then I do that one question for Superintendent Evaluation Committee. I know that we had on the agenda to do CP eval.
She, she sent me an email, I asked her to send me a quote for it. So I'm just putting her in quotes.
And so are you good with us not having that in place, with using that for your evaluation?
It's, yeah, I mean, I did the preview, I did the whole video except last year, so it's, it's good, I think it would be a great tool.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you're good.
I'm just waiting on the quote from her, because she did send me an email, and I replied and said, please send us a quote, I've already discussed it, and they're ready to use it.
Okay. Moving on, no gold business, like I said. New business.
Uh, well, this, every year the board has approved our school prison plans. And so they've been upping the fees, they did, we actually just re-. And just so you all know, we've been working with Camilla Stewart, with the Illinois State Board of Education. So she's our consultant, and then we've been wanting to hire C four or with staff, so we're advertising. So we've been taking our teams over there, so all of our plans are, are written based on the state requirements. So. It's from each school, from Wagner, uh, Schreiber, and the, and there was a district. And that's where there were about how many leaders? About ten, eleven, twelve. It was a lot. So the, the culminating document of this. And then we submit them to the state by June thirty, so very.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school improvement plan as presented, a second. A motion and second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Justin Williams.
Yes.
Darrell Jones.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Gary, yes, Jones?
Yes, motion here. That's the lead.
These next two motions are connected to the transfer of funds that, or I was glad that she mentioned in this room, we didn't just, just wanted to speak to it. We already did a public hearing earlier, so the hearing occurred, but just so that everybody knows what this is for. And it's the next two motions.
So we're coming to you seeking approval to make some inter-fund transfers. We want to move money from one of our funds to some of our other funds. Uh, the net result will be no change in our overall fund balance. Uh, but as Miss Fish mentioned, last year we had a couple of funds with negative balances, and it's not good accounting practice. So we're trying to put that in order by making these transfers. Uh, our attorneys have reviewed it, they're in agreement with it, and we think it makes sense for the district to, to move forward with the, with the transfers.
And you'll see, the agenda is from the head fund to operations and maintenance and transportation are the two big ones that were negative from. FY twenty-four that we need to transfer funds, so it's a two-step process. First, the board approves the resolution to transfer, and then the second motion is the resolution to abate the working cash, so that we can actually do the transfer.
Okay, and just for those that will be watching us online, if you could give them a breakdown, transportation is obvious, but if you could tell what's in the education fund versus operations?
So education fund is everything from salaries, benefits, um, curriculum materials, anything that has to do with just the education of students in general. Then your operations and maintenance fund, that's the facilities, running the meetings, running the buildings, making sure that our, um, that the cleaning projects, you know, cleaning products, products you need. Um, and then transportation clearly is buses, in some cases special ed transportation, they're just the tents, but it's, so you've got O and M in transportation. That we need to, that were negative, that we just need to move funds into those accounts and make them balanced. That's where, right, so this is from your last fiscal year. So which is why the auditor, that's why when she made that comment about transferring, that's why we're going to do that, so that we can use it now.
We're just challenging our tech folks. No, 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 that's, that's, that's the explanation, bringing us to settle, settle, settle.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to transfer funds from the education fund to the operations and transportation. A second, motion is second, any questions? Here, now roll call.
Justin Williams.
Um, come back to me. Come back to me.
Will you have discussion?
No, I'm just saying a quick question, it wasn't nothing like big or that, but.
Well, ask a question.
Because I'm thinking, okay, we, we trying to balance it now, but then what about again next year, we have to do it again.
So how Mr. Louie explained it, um, and I had to, it was the grant that we got.
I just went up.
Oh, no, I'm saying, go ahead and explain how you say, is the grant that we got when we build block, when we did blossoms?
Most of the time when we do construction, you take money from available funds, move it into the capital fund, and you pay for your construction that way. Uh, when we did blossoms, it's a little different, it's kind of special, because we paid for it with grant funds. So the grant funds come after the fact. So we did all the construction, we ran the, the balance in the fund negative, but the money to replenish that fund doesn't come until afterwards, until it's over. And so, but it comes into the head fund, doesn't come into the capital fund. So now we're just taking that money that we got from the grant, from Esser, uh, Esser three, with Esser two and Esser three. We're taking that money out of the head fund and moving it into the capital fund to bring the capital fund back up to where it should be.
Because that's what we pay.
Because that's what operations and maintenance. Did I miss that earlier? Yes. Roll call, please. Thank you. Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Barry. Justin Williams.
Yes.
Gary, yes, Jones?
Yes, motion here. I make a motion to approve the resolution to abate the, um, women's debt fund. I have a motion, and second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Fisher.
Yes.
Barry.
Two.
Barry, yes, Justin Williams?
Yes.
Darrell Jones?
Yes. Yes, motion here. That assessment, that's what you want to speak to this?
So every year we have to, um, have a threat assessment crisis plan meeting, and so that meeting entails all of our building administrators, district, and the chief left. So the fire department, police department, so we review, and we have our social workers, and so it's, it's a big meeting where we all come together. We review what a threat assessment is, so how do we know what kind of threat it is, what do we need to do? We work with the police department, the fire department, to talk about what happens if you have a threat to the building, so this is an annual meeting. We have to have that, we have to provide it to the state, those two, the regional office, so they have our threat assessment crisis plan on file. And it has been done before children come back from school. So we held a meeting, and I think that for Camilla, because she was very instrumental in pulling all the documents together, making sure we had the PowerPoint, we had some videos. Uh, we actually just sent, um, Mr. Lawson, Mr. Louie to the Alice training, so we, so this is just a part of our threat assessment crisis plan. One thing that we do not do is that plan is not published for public consumption, because it has in there what we do in certain cases of a threat. So as a board, you have access to it, but we do not publicly put that out. But our police department, the fire department, and ESST, they're all a part of that communication. So we, so we talked about when we do the patient studies, so all of that, so when our staff comes back and the following things that they need to know, that have been updated in that plan. Will be part of the institute day for the first two days of school.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the debt assessment plan as presented, so a second, any questions? Roll call. I mean, yes.
Here, here, back to you.
Yes.
Darrell Jones?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes, motion here. Last, I'm for the section, food service. Mr. Louie?
Madam President. In May, we advertised a bid soliciting, uh, food service vendors. We have pre-bid meeting in May as well, and a taste test.
For the bequest of the board. Send the taste.
No, I didn't get to make it, because it has to be rescheduled.
Well, the children tasted it.
That's not like that.
And their input was really, um, kettle, kettle, one to date, very good one to date.
Their input one to date, they were real serious, they were honest.
Uh, yes, they were very honest, and very excited to be a part of. Um, so we had three bidders, one would determine to be non-responsive.
Who was the bidder?
Um. Nope, it's in your document now. The tabulation.
Both in kitchen, Jester Dash, and gourmet.
Go up to number seven dash.
So, so we had the three bids, one was, uh, did not meet, uh, all the criteria, and so we considered that one to be non-responsive. Of the two remaining bids, the price differential was less than three thousand dollars. Uh, so the, the item that really won the day was the taste test. And so the, uh, the bidder who ultimately we're recommending, uh, for approval is our current bidder. I'm, I'm sorry, our first food service provider, Jester Dash. So at this time, I would bring before you our request for your approval.
Yes.
To award the contract to Jester Dash. Uh, this will be pending final approval for me.
Is there a motion to approve Jester Dash as a law of food service?
Well, we got to pay three thousand more versus, um, we normally go with the lowest bidder, correct?
So if you remember, we had, um, information about the law that was passed, if you want to speak to that.
So House Bill forty-eight thirteen passed in twenty twenty-two. And what it does is it gives us a leeway to include student input, um, into the decision. And so we added student input specifically, because the board requested that we have taste testing, and that the students would be part of that, and that their voice would be heard. So, um, so there, it was, there was a cooler winner, and because of that, we, because the price differential was relatively small. Out of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars or so difference, only about three thousand dollars. And so we felt because of the, because of the taste test and everything else, that, uh, Jester Dash should be, should win the award.
And the other thing too, to be mindful of, is that because we had to do an emergency last year, by doing it. By making sure that we followed all of the things that needed to happen this year, even that is a two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar cost saving to the district. For next year. So it's trying to close the deficit.
All right, I make a motion to approve Jester Dash as the food service, to award Jester Dash. Just a dash, the food service contract, sir. Motion is second, questions? Roll call.
Justin Williams. I'm sorry, your name just.
Yes.
Darrell Jones.
Yeah.
Fisher. Barry. Gary, yes, Jones?
Yes, motion carries.
We like that, we, ours goes up.
Close session. I make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of personnel discussion admitted and collective bargaining, as per. I have a motion and a second, questions? Um.
Back to you.
Yes.
Darrell Jones?
Yes, closed session, that's the. Yes, closed session, that's it.
PM, I would motion out of second. Any questions? Row call please.
Yes. Jackson, where do you go? Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yes, I'm being... Um... We just did the time section thing. I make a motion to appoint Portia Mazari as the reporting secretary for July 1, 2025. School year. With the stipend of $7,500.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, yeah. Okay, no question. Here, row call. Jackson, yes.
There's no...
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes, now she carries. Um... Do I need a name?
Uh huh. They should have been in there.
It's not.
Okay. This was second.
This is...
That's how I want.
Oh, okay. So what is going on? Like, I make a motion to... The resignation agreement of being stupid has been...
Yeah, I know, seconds.
I will motion out of second. Any questions? Row call.
Jackson, yes, there's no... Garrett?
Yes.
Garrett, yes, Joan?
Yes. Motion, Garrett, so can I report?
I will be quick. First is our FOIA, which I had to... I was just teasing! Now, good, so as required by law, we report our FOIAs. We've had two FOIA's since our last board meeting. One was from Smart Procurer, which you all are familiar with, with the aunt, all of our vendors. The other one was from the South Cook News. They were asking for information regarding our high school students going to mew out the Theta's annual conference. So we like to know we do not have high school students. So both of those have been fulfilled.
Okay.
And it's planning for 25, 26 school year. Just a reminder to board members, institute day, and I know this is hard to believe, it is less than two months. Obviously, 11th is our first institute day. And we, July 28th, classes will be available for staff to access. And we actually will have our staff available, our custodians are working right now. And you probably saw the legwork that was done the last Tuesday night at Rickover. So we're trying to take care of Rickover and Strasburg right now. So that when we get summer school, we can return to Wagner really quickly. We have our traditions going on, our international teachers arrive next week. So we have a lot going on. Our principals are not so here, well, slide 200. But they have been working diligently with their staff, trying to get school food things done. Um, designing lessons, I mean, it's just, it's been a lot in our between Ms. Patterson, Dr. Wittersker. Trying to make sure all of our materials are ready for opening of school. It is, when I say people think that it's an off in the summer, this is, this is our high time. So we will, will report the night, give me the board to know. When we come back for that meeting in August, that you all are always gracious enough to do a special meeting. That, that is, we talked about August 7th, August 11th is that Monday. We will have been working fast and furiously in between that time. We also have our traditions coming up. We've got the in-person registrations that first week of August. So there's a lot of moving pieces, making sure that with the board as we go along. But it is, it's, we're fast and furious right now. And in addition to that, we've been working diligently with Mr. Moody, our whole team, trying to figure out where we can do budget reductions, where we can make adjustments. Just so the board is aware, we received our Title I grant, which was cut by $300,000. We received some of our monies connected to IDEA, but we don't have all the preschool for all or preschool for all expansion. We've got the after-school grant. Our Title II grant right now is zero. It is not being populated, Title III also not being populated. So we are, well, it is, it's just that it's, it's, those are federal dollars. And it's centered in Washington DC. And I know we spent a lot of time out there advocating, this, this is a special year. I'll just put it that way. So we've had a lot of money that is just gone. You know, our property checks and leave grant that is put on hold for next year. And before us, that was almost like $50,000. So, so right now, we are in the mode of trying to figure out how do we maneuver? How do we get through this window of time? Because at the end of the day, that's what is a window of time. So we just have to figure it out. But at the end of the day, in less than two months, on August, I'm just putting it out there, August 13th, our kindergarteners, third graders, sixth graders, new students show up. On August 14th, everybody shows up. And on August 21st, it's going to be a back-to-school bash. So less than a month from today is the back-to-school bash. August 21st. So, so just, just to note, we have a lot going on as we're preparing for next school year. I will say this, though, this is an exciting school year because I think we have some opportunity connected to our IAR. We're just starting to get in our scores that are preliminary data. So we'll, we'll report that out in August, where we are preliminary. And then, of course, in October, we do the full blog. But I think we're getting some good data, especially for Rickover. I know Dr. Kimbrough is headed off to other things, but I think we're getting some good data from them. So we'll be, we'll report all that. Summer school, summer school. Can I jump in? Where's, can I jump in and ask you guys, you can maybe quick update, like numbers?
Sure, we are at approximately four kindergarten through seventh grade, about one-third of our 200 students. So we started August, August 9th. And I'm sorry, June 9th.
She's already retired.
I'm already in August. So we started June 9th. And we had, even before June 9th, we had professional development for all of our staff. And when I say professional development, professional development on all of the curriculum. So no teacher started without being informed about what they are teaching. Of course, the curriculum consists of Progress E.L.A. and Progress Math, which the staff definitely has taught in the past. We have WASD for STEM program. We have Monty Dancer's back again. We have Junior Achievement for our financial literacy. Kids are engaged in actual physical education. And of course, the weekly field trips, one of the first field trips, Ms. Jenkins, was the Shad Aquarium last week. And you all are going this week too. Yes, so there are trips planned for every week.
And I just want to give kudos to Ms. Jenkins because she's been our program coordinator for... I can't even say, I feel like she's there the whole time. But she is like on it, like our field trips and, you know, and the exposure for our children is amazing. And for some of our kids, it's like their first time, you know, like especially like a little ones, it's their first time getting out of the village and just seeing what's, what's out there. So thank you, we really appreciate you. And we also are doing a pre and post assessment for children. So that we're collecting data on how they do over the course of the summer. So that we know when they come back and make them reading. So we know when, when we finish up, and our last day is July 16th. And so we know from that data, when they show up on August 13th, the data that we already have ready to figure out where to go from here. So, so it's exciting, the kids have a good time. And also, don't forget that we have our summer meals program, families. We have breakfast and lunch, we have food available for all children 18 and under. Whether you go to our schools or not, it is at, it is at Wagner every day. So please, please, we have a grant that pays for that. And we encourage our families, please come out because it's free food. We have meals, you can enjoy in the air conditioning. If you want to sit in somewhere cool, you can sit in the cafeteria and eat. So please, please enjoy that. Okay, administrative retreat update. Come on, come on Advent team! So this year, we actually did a binder instead of a cone. Um, one, two third, because I cannot say enough about our team. We went through so much material. We, it wasn't just the logistics, but we also had Dr. Salinas come in. And she is, and you all know her. Yes, so she came, she came in and spent a half a day with administrators on understanding our own love languages, how we work together, how our brains operate, a whole communication strand. The board might love her. She is amazing. And at the end of the time that we spent with her, we walked, we walked out feeling like, okay, we know we have to do all of this stuff, but we've got to know each other to make this stuff the most productive for our staff and our students. So, so it was really good. And then we talked it off on that Thursday with a little get-together that was, that was nice and fun. We went your hair down and relaxed and everybody having a chance to sort of get to just see each other in a different manner than just all of the work that has to go into it. What came out of this too is our principals were able to really work through what we have at the district level that's connected to their school improvement plans, what that looks like, and then how we facilitate that. And so I think, I feel like we are in a really positive place walking into the 25, 26 school year. And I want to thank Myra because this is, is her final board meeting. And not one time did Myra say, 10 board meetings to go. But she was... But she was instrumental in making sure that our transition has been going well. That, I mean, I can't, I sit and watch just the lists of everything that needs to happen. The administrative retreat, it was almost to the point that I was like, okay, you all cannot have any more time. I'm going to cut you off. But, so I have others under my report because... Would this be your final board meeting? Our board wanted to present to you some beautiful pink things. And say thank you to all the board members that have gone. So beautiful. I, trust me, trust me, you think I don't know? So I want to say thank you again. I know this is, we talked, we said it earlier, but we've been in this business for 35 years. That's a long time. And we've been at this level, at the district level. And I can't even tell, I've lost count of board meetings. But at some point, you're sitting there like, did I do 150 or 180? But just thank you for all that you've done to support, just to say thank you and how much we appreciate you. Your best board meeting! And now, that's the back and front report.
Well, longer than we expected, but all right.
They gave you three minutes. I didn't have too good.
All right, public comments, please stand, state your name for the record. If you have a response, one will be provided. If not, we will take your information and get back to you.
Uh, big thank you, I just said. I just wanted to say that my husband took a bike ride the other day and he goes, "The parking lot we work is fully paved." So I'm finally, finally failing. I don't feel like the stepsister no more. It's Charlie's key, yeah. So then I don't have to go in the mountain difference, the difference, you're right.
And the other public comment. Just for the record, there was no July Just, uh, for the record, there was no July board meeting. Um, but there will be two board meetings in August. So one at the end, one at the end. With that being said, if there's none of the business, I make a motion to adjourn at nine seventeen ten. I have a motion in two seconds and questions? Row call.
In two seconds, yes. Dervin Jones. Garrett.
Yes.
Garrett, yes, Johnson Williams.
Yes. Yes. It's that time.
Hey, we all want to take you out.
Did we take a picture with Myra before we said it?
Yeah.
Like right in the front?
I'm off July ninth.